Hello, I called to order the special meeting of the Stratford Town Council Thursday, July 13th at 6:05 PM. This is a special meeting because there were council members who called the meeting. Those members are Marian Antezzo, Scott Farrington Posner, Wally Kadim, Greg Can, Philip Young, and Tina Manus. Just for the record, I want to point out this was called on very short notice, so a number of people could not attend. I myself had no intention of being here today due to travel plans. Those travel plans have been postponed, so I could be here. So there's only one, there are two items on the agenda. There's a first item which, just for the record, we had voted on last week, a week ago tonight. That is an ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the town of Stratford for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018, appropriating the sum of $219,490,023 in accordance therewith. Would anybody like to move that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat what you just said?
The whole thing? How far do you want me to go back?
No, the last part.
It's the, there is one item on the agenda. There are two items. Item 2.1 is an ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the town of Stratford for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018, and appropriating the sum of $219,490,023 in accordance therewith. Would anybody like to move that item?
I have a question.
Would anybody like to move that item?
Point of information.
I'm sorry, where, there's no information. This is the item on the agenda. Is anybody moving that item?
Yeah, someone moved.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, the item was moved by Councilman Young, seconded by Councilman Farrington Posner. Okay, there's discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the figure to read $217,103,448.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that for the record, please?
Yes. Two, one, seven, million, one hundred, three thousand, four hundred, forty-eight.
Okay, and do you have items that support that, or are you just giving a total?
I'm just changing the number.
Right, but are there line item adjustments to be made? I'm not sure how we get to $217,103,448. Are there line items to be, line item amendments that you'd like to make that get us to that figure?
I don't know, was it seconded? Was the amendment seconded?
There was no second, but the amendment, this is a budget you're approving, so you need to have, you can't just change the bottom line. You have to change individual lines within the budget to come up with that number. So the motion would more appropriately be, I meant, I moved to amend the ordinance, change the dollar amount, and because you're referring to a budget that has previously been submitted, you need to have line item changes to that budget.
Mr. Leclair stated that your amendment is incomplete because what you are offering is simply a total without the line item adjustments. So you can inform people how you get to that total, what the amendment actually is.
I believe Mr. Can has the line items.
But you are recognized right now.
Pardon?
You are the one making the amendment, so can you provide the detail of that amendment?
Do you want me to read every single line item?
They have to be in the record.
I've got three pages of line items.
They have to be read or they have to be submitted, because if you're going to vote on something, everyone voting, as well as the public under FOIA needs to know what you did.
Ms. Antezzo, I personally have not seen any of the line item adjustments for what you are referring to.
All right, I will proceed to read the line items, then.
Do you have a photocopy of this, perhaps?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you have copies to distribute?
I believe they were sent to you this last week.
I was not ever sent anything that said this is what we would be voting on this evening.
Well, they need to get into the record, you know, whether they were sent last week. The clerk needs those.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, is there, is it really a point of order, or is it a question?
No, it's a point of order. Well, maybe clarification. Mr. Pondy, I was on the, on the email where you requested the budget that's going to be presented tonight, and Mr. Can did send it to you by email.
I was not, I was not told that one of those, I was actually sent two budgets, and I was not informed that one of those was exactly what we were going to be voting on this evening. So I'm just asking, you're making an amendment for $217,103,448. I'm just asking for the specifics, if you could share with the council, please, how we get to that number.
Yes, I'd be glad to. I'll read all four pages of it. Revenue, organization number.
I'm sorry, Mr. Leclair would like to interrupt.
If you just have a copy, if you have a copy of these four pages, I would just suggest that perhaps copies be made for all the council members, for the town attorneys, and most importantly, for Ms. Cabral, the clerk, so that they're in the minutes, and you can refer to that schedule or attachment.
Would you like us to recess so you can make copies?
I just want to ask one question, because we had a budget presented to us which consisted of one sheet followed by a number of stapled sheets which had no line items whatsoever. That was supposed to be acceptable.
I'm sorry, the mayor's budget, the second proposed, the second proposed mayor's budget had line items.
Okay.
Would you like a recess so there can be copies made?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll take a recess so copies of this can be made.
Give me that paper. Do you have it?
Yeah, take it.
Carol, let's go into your email box.
I've written all over mine, but this isn't going to work. This is, this is not a straightforward.
Really, what does that mean?
Have you ever heard the song "Betty Day"?
Are they good eyes? Is that good eyes?
Yeah, but I've written all over mine, and I want to see. Yeah, but I've written all over, so I wanted to see some clean copy.
Okay.
Every one of these people got one in the mail. I know they did.
You've got Betty Day. Okay, yes, yes. Sorry I was late, guys, I was coming from work, and Mr. Kadim is also on his way.
Tina, did you get a copy?
I got whatever you guys sent.
Okay. Okay, wait a minute.
See, this is what happens. It's arms and bitch, right?
I'll be okay.
Okay.
The only thing is, they gave us the budget when they said, oh, this is the way to do it. They had one page with changes, and then they had, then they had.
But they're followed by the budget.
Several pages that had no line items. Some are very incorrect, or as I can see. However, that's another story. It'll be relatively short once I read all the stuff.
Well, does she have to read everything on there? Does she have to read through the entire list of everything?
I've got to go through the entire list.
What's?
I need to read off all the, it's actually the original budget by three million. Yeah, Carol is making copies for everybody.
Yeah, I know, it's like the same last year.
Okay, we're back from the recess. In the future, and this goes, excuse me, Mr. Parity, Ms. Manus, we're back from recess. In the future, and this goes for all council items that need to be distributed at meetings, it is extremely helpful if the council clerk has such items before meetings, because she will happily, I'm sorry, I'm speaking.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, if the administration did that themselves, it would set a good precedent.
I'm sorry, because she will hap, you are interrupting.
Yes, to be clear for the public.
No, you are interrupting. The council clerk has informed that she did not have this, and it is helpful if the council clerk has all items that are, that will be considered for meetings ahead of time. Ms. Antezzo, would you like to read, walk us through this, please?
Thank you for your advice, but anyway, oh, what am I doing? Tough when you get old. Okay. In order to justify the decrease, which is actually about $3 million from the original budget offered by the mayor, which has decreased to $217,103,448. The line items are such. The organization, I guess that's what org means. 29929, object 4626, railroad utilization of fund balances, this is a revenue of plus $83,500.
Madam Chairman, point of order, I have object number 6055.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chase, I think they're talking about the revenue items, starting, and then, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, Ms. Antezzo. Mr. Leclair?
We are talking about revenue.
Ms. Antezzo.
Mr. Leclair?
If you would like, you can, you don't have to read each of these items if you'd like just to refer to this document for the record that you all have and the clerk has.
I'm sorry, what?
Mr. Leclair said that you do not have to read each item, you can refer to the document now that we have it in front of us. However, there are a number of us who haven't seen this or haven't gone through it thoroughly before, so we would need some time to read it.
Okay.
And maybe just one.
And the thing I don't understand is, I thought each council member was sent a copy of this a week ago.
We were not sent a copy saying that this is what will be on this agenda, that this is, I mean, it would have been helpful to have this budget on this agenda.
All right, okay, all right. Let's give people a minute to look at it. While they're doing that, I would like to inform people who would be interested in it that this particular budget of $117 million plus.
$217?
Does eventuate in a mil rate of 39.2, which may change the way you look at this. I'm just saying that.
I'm sorry, you had said earlier a number of 217 million, and I think I just heard 117 million.
No, 217 million.
The chairman's correct, Ms. Antezzo, you just said it was 117 million a second ago. You may have misspoke.
I'll, I'll repeat.
Okay.
The total is $217,103,448.
Ms. Antezzo, may I inquire?
And that was the change I made to the ordinance.
Okay.
I thought you wrote it down.
I did. Mr. Leclair has a clarification. Mr. Leclair?
Just if you can clarify, Ms. Antezzo, when you have numbers, for instance, in revenue, you have numbers that are not in parentheses, are those increases or decreases to those revenue line items?
The ones that are, oh, you have black and white, I'm sorry, I have mine in color. The ones not in parentheses are plus.
So for example, under railroad.
Anything in a parentheses is a minus.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I, I'm sorry, so to interpret this, I just want to be a little clearer. Under the first item, 299294626, railroad utilization of fund balance, you are increasing the use of that fund balance by 83,548. To get the actual number, how do I do that? That's being used out of that fund balance? Do I?
Through the chair?
I'm sorry, it was a question to Ms. Antezzo.
Oh, yield to Mr. Can to answer that question.
Yielding to him? Okay, Mr. Can, how do I get to the number that's being allocated for utilization?
That number came directly from the mayor's amended budget, so if you had questions, they were probably resolved at the time you reviewed the mayor's 39.7 budget.
I'm just asking, so is this adjustment, that's an adjustment to the 39.7. It's just getting a little complicated now, because we're adjusting.
It's not an adjustment to the 39.7, but this particular line item is taken directly from the mayor's budget of the 39.7 amendment. The 39.7 amendment of the mayor's had this item on it, and we presumed if it was a good idea for the mayor and for the four council members that we were trying to compromise with, that we would just take that as it seemed to be acceptable to you under that purpose, so we were just going to use it for this purpose.
Okay, so that number, thank you for that. So that figure of 83,548, that's the same adjustment that's in the 39.7?
Memory served.
Or is this, or are you adding another 83,000 from what is in the 39.7 budget?
I guess to be more precisely clear, let's go back to the mayor's 39.73 budget.
Okay.
This is an amendment to the 39.73 budget.
Which may have already had an amended number in that.
His original budget proposal, his original budget proposal that came to us in that big fat green book that Mr. Timniak did not want to recopy, this amendment presented to us here is an amendment to the big green book.
Okay, so now it's to this one, which is different, that's not the 39.7.
No, no, it's, no, it's not, it's to the 39.7. It's an amendment to the mayor's original budget.
I'm sorry, now, now, it seems like you just gave me two separate answers. Is it an amendment, it's not an amendment to this, it's an amendment, this was the first mayor's proposed, then there was the second.
Yeah, what was, what was the mil rate in the mayor's original proposal?
39.93.
Oh, it was? I'm sorry, I was going, too many numbers, too many weeks.
Yeah, no, there are a lot of numbers, I just, that's why I just want to be clear on this.
So, the precise answer is, this is an amendment to the mayor's green book budget.
Point of order.
Okay, so, wait, then we're not amending what's on this agenda, is that what you're telling me?
Excuse me.
Wait, I, I'm sorry, you yielded to Mr. Can. Mr. Can, are we not amending what's on this agenda, or are we amending this green book?
Green book.
That's not on this agenda.
The number on the agenda was taken from your previous agenda, which you eliminated. I assume that was the last.
Mr. Leclair?
That was offered.
Mr. Leclair, I just want to make sure we're doing things right. They're offering an amendment to the first proposed budget. That first proposed budget is not on this agenda.
Point of order.
Wait, I'm asking the attorneys to just tell me.
This is a point of order.
Mr. Leclair, I'm sorry. This amendment is to the, what's in the green book, which is different, which is not the item on this agenda.
Point, point of order. Point of order, and perhaps one of the gentleman attorneys could answer this question.
I, I just want to be able to get to the.
If you're going to continue to discuss things, you should yield your chair to.
No, this has to do with what's on this agenda and what we're amending, and I just want to get, be able to backtrack what number.
Madam Chair.
Excuse me, Ms. Chair.
I'm sorry, Mr. Young, I recognize you.
This is part of this budget right here. This, that particular part of this is part of this budget. There are pieces of this amendment that stayed the same as the mayor's budget, okay? That's one of them, right there. The revenue sides are things that stayed from the mayor's last budget that was put out, that we are under consideration right now.
So to get back to the number that will actually be allocated, for, I shouldn't say allocated, be received from the railroad fund on this first item, I'm adding 83,548 to what number? What's in the screen book, or what's in the ma?
This would be from the mayor's last budget.
And that's true for all these figures. We're adjusting the thirty, we're adjusting what's on the agenda?
Most of these, most of the revenue numbers there are the same from the mayor's budget.
Right, but are all of them, are all of these adjustments, are all of these adjustments to the 39.7 budgeted mil rate? The budget with the 39.7 mil rate?
Could I?
I think I can answer the chair's question.
Point of order.
Try to keep them all the same, and for the mayor's.
I have a point of order. The chair is not supposed to discuss things, the chair is just.
The chair, I'm not discussing it, I'm just asking how we, how we can get back to, I'm just trying to figure out what we're voting on, because I'm sure everybody wants to know what we're voting on. So when you say that the 40, that EMS 439437001 is being reduced by 115,000, I don't know what numbers.
Madam Chair, you've asked questions, Ms. Manus has had her hand up now for 10 minutes to answer your questions, but you repeatedly decide to just overlook her.
No, I will.
If you have questions, and Ms. Manus is looking to answer them, let her answer them, please.
There are, Mr. Young also wanted to be recognized. Okay, Mr. Young, are you able to explain this?
Every single item, no, I can't, that's more.
Okay, Ms. Manus, can you explain this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The issue in this budget, and you don't need to go roundabout, Madam Chair, to explain it, the issue with what is being presented is, what is being presented is not a budget. I'm sure Mr. Leclair will agree. It is amendment to a budget.
Right.
It is an, I have the floor. It is an amendment to a budget, but which budget? When this budget process began, we all voted in an amendment. It eventually raised taxes, so that budget was voted down. That was the green book with the amended budget on top. That was clarified with Mr. Timniak, correct? Yes. We came forward with multiple amendments after that. Mr. Timniak created multiple budgets. At the last meeting, a 39.70 budget was put forward. It was an amended budget by the mayor. We voted it down. The budget was voted down. Therefore, to come back to a meeting today with an amendment, the amendment has to sit on top of another budget. The budget can be a 39.70 budget, but the numbers in the 39.93 book need to be amended to adjust for that. It could simply be amendments to anticipated expense and BOE, if you wanted to just go from an easy starting point. Not that you're going to keep the numbers there, but that you would have a budget to put forward. Right now, what it looks like to me is you have a top, but no jar to screw it onto. Now, if the lawyers here see fit that our agenda, which was put forward for this meeting, Now, if the lawyers here see fit that our agenda, which was put forward for this meeting, meaning our agenda, our town council agenda, that thirty-nine-point-seven-zero budget that was amended is allowed to move forward, then we would be going on the mayor's amended thirty-nine-point-seven-zero with that small, two-pager that he gave out. My understanding is, is that that budget was voted down. We would need another budget, either created by us, or created by Town Hall, to then amend, unless this represents a whole lot of budget line items and is just a couple pages of an amendment to something else that's missing. So, I think it's not as confusing as it seems, it's just we've got, we've got an idea, but nothing to link it into because of the procedures and parliamentary stuff that's been going on, and the multiple budgets that have been turned down. Does that make sense to everybody? Did I explain that? Okay, so either we can sit here and create a new budget, or we can look at the green book and move a couple numbers around to make it legal, so we can move forward, or we can have, with the lawyers' okay, we can go back to the mayor's amended budget, I'm not sure if that's allowed to be able to do, but we have something else, an amendment to at least look at and discuss as a team. So I think if we, even if we can't vote on it, we should at least be talking about it, and we should spend some time digesting it as a group, saying what we like, what we don't like, what is workable, what is non-negotiable, and we need to do that in front of people. That's me, that's what I thought I was coming here to do. I want to put, I saw what was put out, my understanding is that we would be talking as a team. So, that's what I'm looking to do today. I'm looking to talk about this as a group, for the people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, but I just got two different answers, one from Mr. Can that said that this amendment, I'm happy to talk about it, actually, I'd love to, I just want to be clear about what we're talking about. If these numbers are adjusting, are they, these numbers, are they adjusting the green book, or are they adjusting the thirty-nine-point-seven budget?
Absolutely, and I think that that's rightfully so, my question still exists to the town attorney, if the thirty-nine-point-seven-zero, even though it was on the agenda, if that was even legally allowed to be on the agenda, because it was voted down.
I'm going to let Mr. Can answer the first, the question about which budget that we're looking at. Mr. Can?
Madam Chair, without being too roundabout, I'm going to try an explanation. On the agenda, we have the thirty-nine-point-seven.
Yes.
That was accompanied last week with a number of line item amendments. So for tonight, maybe to facilitate our discussion, on one hand, we could vote to reject all of those amendments, and secondly, introduce another alternate set of amendments, which is this. That would meet the requirements of the agenda, that we start with the budget and the thirty-nine-point-seven based set of amendments. First action could be to reject all of those amendments, and the second action could be to introduce a second set of amendments. If that would satisfy the agenda, then essentially, that would get us to the same place, get us to the place of the green book. So the thirty-nine-point-seven's a set of amendments that get us to the green book. We could vote tonight to reject that in its entirety, and we could replace that with the second set of amendments, which will be, again, applied to the same green book.
Okay, so, just to be clear, the figures that you gave us here are an adjustment to the, what we know as the green book budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's, I just wanted to be clear. Now, Mr. Florak, you seem to, okay, Mr. Chase?
No, I'm fine now.
You're fine now? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so-
All right, could you just repeat the initial amendment, so that we have that in our minds?
It seems to me that the amendment being proposed is the amendment in front of us. The only issue that may be an issue, maybe not, is that this is amending the green book budget, it's not actually an amendment to what's on the agenda. Is that right, Mr. Leclerc? Do you need a recess? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
What?
Could I talk to Mr. Can and Mr. Young?
If you can figure out, call-
In essence, it's true, because if I look at, if I look at the green book and I take the three million off, it comes down to the twenty-seventeen. Yeah, and there are, here are some-
See, but I thought we were talking about this budget here, this is the last year's budget that you put in, and we did amendments to that, which is what you need.
Hello? Ellie? Hi. Hi, Mama.
Well, we didn't vote on it.
Okay, seems like we have a way to go forward, which is that- Everybody can take their seats, please, which is that the amendment is for two-seventeen-one-oh-three-four-four-eight. Because two-point-one is not specified, we're okay, and you're, so you're telling the rest of the council that the way that you get to that number is to take the green book and do these changes, and then we're good. Right? Okay, is there, is there a second, there was a second for the amendment? Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Kadim. Okay, now, discussion. Is there-
Discussion?
Yep, is there a finance director present?
I wanted to be perfectly clear to everyone that this two-hundred-and-seventeen million dollars plus that is suggested is going to cause a mill rate of thirty-nine-point-two. I want to be honest about that. So if you vote for this, when we move forward to the mill rate, it will be thirty-nine-point-two, which is a heck of a lot lower than thirty-nine-point-nine-seven. That's my comment.
And you're adding money to education, you're adding a couple million to education?
Two-point-three-five.
Two-point-three-five percent.
Which, I must comment, one more comment. I talked to the mayor last Friday, and what was offered to me as a compromise was the Board of Ed at three, two-point-three. He also suggested a mill rate of thirty-nine-point-five. I will tell you, that's the truth, that's what he told me, but I don't ever see it appear.
Does anybody know if the finance director submitted some sort of report for the council to consider along with this? I have not received one.
Madam Chair, this is slightly higher than the budget that was shared with the finance director and CAO and mayor a couple of weeks ago. I don't mean to speak for you thoroughly, Phil, but we had a thirty-eight-point-nine-nine that was essentially exactly the same as this, but with a lower BOE amount. So the CAO and the finance director, I've tried to follow up with them periodically over the last few weeks, but they've chosen not to respond.
Okay, Mr. Kadim?
Yes. Firstly, I'd just like to say that this is a great compromise in my overview, because quite naturally, we had two-sixteen, the mayor's at two-nineteen, the mayor decided not to come down, so we decided to come up, which is a good thing. Hopefully, he can come down when he looks at it again. I do not want to go past three-eight-point-nine-nine. But it's hard not to try to do something. You know, the mayor, I'm quite sure he's been very busy, he did what he can do, perhaps he'll present another budget, but we can't stand on the sidelines and wait for that. We have a job to do as council members, so this is the movement that is being done. I pray that you guys adopt it, hopefully this time it won't be vetoed, and we can move along and call the question. So if anyone wants to speak now, it's fine, but I think we shouldn't waste so much time here, this is all we have in front of us, and it's okay if we move the question to see where it falls. Thank you very much.
Are you making a motion to call the question?
If it's okay to give it to him, and then I would continue to call the question, would that be okay?
Well, I think there are a number of other people who would like to speak also.
Yes, Madam Chair, that's what I would like to do, so people don't feel left out. That's why I said, I didn't move to call the question because of the fact that other people have their own input on this, and I would like them to express themselves. Thank you very much.
Mr. Farrington Posner?
Madam Chair, thank you. I've been on record quite a few times saying that I would not vote for any budget that increases taxes. During this time of the budget crisis, now that's been going on for over two months, I've spoken with a lot of residents, including a lot of parents, educators, administrators, and I do understand the importance of funding the Board of Education, and it's something as a parent that I would like to do. What I don't support is the fact that I knowingly, that there is still a lot of cost savings that can be taken out of the town administration. I asked Mr. Harkins, Mayor Harkins, at the special meeting at the Board of Ed, you know, what would he cut from his budget? And he didn't answer me, he deflected back to my budget, or our budget of the six. Again, I followed up, and I said, specifically, I asked you about your budget. And the meeting was moved along, and there was no answer to it. I do think that there's a lot more that can be cut out of the municipal side of the budget. I do think that we can not only have a thirty-eight-point-nine-nine mill rate, I think we can actually have a lower mill rate. Unfortunately, I don't think the votes are there for that to happen, and like I've said in the past, there is a lot of protection going on, a lot of political patronage, and people in fear of cutting the fat out of the budget for possible, you know, backlash. But, with that said, I've looked over this budget amendment, I was not part of this new budget amendment, because I knew it was going to raise taxes a bit, and I didn't want to be part of this, because I know that there's more that can be cut. I've offered cuts in the past, some of them were implemented to a degree, and some of them weren't. If this means moving this town forward, and getting our budget in order finally, and also being able to cover the Board of Education and any, I'm sorry, contractual obligations, I will vote for this budget. And I will vote to pass it, because I'm looking at the forest, not the trees here. And I understand that a point-two increase is not a huge tax increase, but it will go to cover the contractual obligations and make sure our students and our teachers are safe. I thought that was terrible, what happened over the last couple of months with that. And I felt very strong-armed by a lot of people, but I do understand that we need to fund the Board of Education. I do not think we need to fund two-point-seven-five percent. I think that is astronomically high and unrealistic, and that number should have never been out there to begin with. Two-point-three-five, I've spoken with the chair, Mr. Fian, two-point-three-five percent is what the Board of Ed chair, Mr. Fian, is saying would be good. And I know Mr. Petroselli is sitting here right now, I hope Mr. Petroselli would agree with that, that the two-point-three-five number, and he's shaking his head yes, so I'm willing to vote on this. What was that? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Petroselli, though. So I'm ready to support this two-point-three-five, I implore the rest of the council to let's get this done tonight, let's pass this thirty-nine-point-two budget, let's not give the mayor his veto again, or his power to veto, let's override that right now with seven votes, let's move this town forward, we're already in mid-July, and the residents, us, we can't do this anymore. This is our job, this is our duty to make sure this town moves forward, and this budget is a compromise from past budgets. It truly is a compromise. So let's just please work together and get this done tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Manis?
Want to briefly comment on some of the things that I see in the budget item amendment before me. The greatest triumph of this amendment that was put together, which I saw briefly in emails, and wasn't directly over, but I knew it was happening, and I was in beginning conversations about what I thought were important, is that it brings revenue into two-hundred-and-seventeen million dollars, which I, in that range, which isn't what I said, which was two-sixteen, but it's close, and it's way closer than two-twenty, it's way closer than two-nineteen, and a lot closer than even two-eighteen. So I like that, because it's spending within our means, that I can see. I don't like that it takes from the railroad revenue, but I can deal with that, because I don't believe that all that enterprise stuff is very cut and dry, I'd have to look more, I'm not a legal state statute person, but I, I'm okay with that. I'd have to look more, I'm not a legal state statute person, but I, I'm okay with that. I'm also really excited that the WPCA funds are separated, and that this is a legal budget, that this budget is not illegal, and that we have the WPCA separated. The fact that we can do the sewer revolving fund this year at 202 and make that first payment back to those reserve funds with the hope and the eye and the vision on lowering sewer fees to come closer to what Milford has at 2, 325, or even just to keep them stable for the next few years to allow things to catch up, that makes me really happy, because I remember in 2006, 2007, seeing those bills go, starting to rise, and really getting worried. A lot of the other cuts in here are things that I have spoken with my constituents door to door about, and I'm laughing, because they're things that they see and that they have wanted. I like that the Town Council is taking a cut from our contingency and our committees. We need to lean it out, guys. We have too many committees and too many things. I know people, you know, the secretaries are great, but we need to really be more efficient as well. And the sandwiches and cookies are awesome, but I could do without them. Definitely. The next thing, the next thing, you could laugh, Mr. Chase, it's okay. You still give me donuts at the cemetery, so. Anyway, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities is another issue. I noticed that it's been zeroed out. I want to just mention that, that's something that we all belong to, that helps us teach us about Robert's Rules of Orders and good government. I noticed that's been zeroed out, we had had it taken out before. I think any council, and the new council is going to need that, so I think it's good that it's back. But again, if that money needed to be moved, I would be okay with that. Stratford Arts Commission, I like that we're making them whole again and returning $5,000 into their coffers, so they don't have to come begging all the time. I think that that's a good move. As far as the anticipated expense, I'm all for it. And the workman's comp piece, I know that it's considered, we've heard, like, underfunding. There's $600,000 put in each one of those accounts every year. When the Mayor went to close the $5 million gap, when I put forward a small line item budget, and I had sent it around to a couple people, including Mr. Chicorelli, who I was getting to know at the time, all of a sudden, Monday, a budget came out from the Mayor, magically, and he had ideas. So I think, and where he pulled those ideas from are from the workman's comp reserves. All that money was pulled from the medical reserves. So I know that those are heavily funded accounts, and because we are in a financial issue right now, I think that a $25,000 reduction in those accounts is not going to kill us. As far as the rest, a lot of these questionable things with utilities and printing and stationary as a teacher, I'm going to tell you.
Around.
Yeah, and printing and stationary, I buy my own as a teacher, so I don't know what that is. And every department has the ability to move things around at their discretion. So just because it's out of one thing doesn't mean you can't move it from another. And then there's that whole 01151 lines of contingencies, which can be moved around as well. So I think that that gives them flexibility. On the back, again, Public Works, Fire Department, and Public Police Department remain unchanged. One of the things that makes me sad is the VNA, we're not, we're not funding them, but, you know, I thought a lot about that. There's a lot of nonprofits in our town, and we need to start maybe creating a fund for them to apply for grants, like we do the CDBG. Maybe that's something the next council could think about, having a pot of money set aside for those nonprofits to apply for, just like we do as teachers into a district sometimes. In Bridgeport, we used to do that, we'd apply for grant funding, $250, or, you know, it could be thousands, a couple thousand dollars. I think there's a better way to restructure that, and, you know, I think this year is the first year of that. There is one thing that's not mentioned on here that I'd like more clarification on regarding Sterling House. Sterling House gets a $75,000 transfer from us for recreation equipment, and when Sterling House was here and spoke with me, just in a sidebar one day when they were here, they said that there's a lot of things that that funds. I would like a breakdown of that, because I think, not that I want to take anything away, but I think it's just for transparency, we're really trying to understand where money goes, and I don't want to lose it. I don't want things to go, because I think, if I'm not mistaken, and I don't know, like VNA, some of that pays for a part of a position that someone has. The other piece is the Board of Ed. Board of Ed, I think that taking out the teachers' retirement, absolutely, that piece is not going to happen at the state level. I also think we're going to end up making more, the $500,000 for cost sharing. We are going to get more EC, the educational cost sharing, the ECS money. And funding the Board of Ed at 2.35 is not disagreeable to me, it never was. Funding the Board of Ed as much as possible, as long as it's agreeable to a critical mass of counselors to make things work, works for me. If we want to move forward, I am on board as long as we have the critical mass of counselors to do it. I'm wary of six, because I'm going to tell you that certain folks that are, shall not be named, don't want certain things fixed in this town. So we need seven, and I don't know if we have it, but I'm on board. Thanks.
There, actually, we're going to go around all at one time.
Can I just answer a question through the Chair for Ms. Manis about Sterling House? I did, is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I did contact the Director of Sterling House in regard to the $75,000, and I do have an email that was sent back to me and some correspondence explaining exactly what that $75,000 is. So I'll forward that to you and anybody else on the council that would like it.
It would be included in the budget next year.
Yes, a breakdown, I agree.
Okay, I'm going to ask the three of you, and then I'd like to say some words too, before we call the question. Mr. Chase, would you like to say anything?
No more.
You have no more to say?
No more.
Ms. Antezza, Mr. Chase?
I have some...
Okay, Mr. Young.
Well, just going through some of the comments I've gotten here right now, this is, the question is whether we're going to try to pass this tonight, or is this another, or is this another step in negotiations? We're honestly trying to negotiate here, trying to come to a thing. There are some issues here that other people have and that kind of thing. So I'm wondering, you know, where we sit. If we're not going to get seven people, which we're not going to get, I don't think, is it, we're having a good discussion here? I think it's actually something that is good. So where do we kind of go from here? And that's what I'm trying to figure out. So I want to continue this conversation. We've made some good strides here, and I think we've made some good concessions here, and I think it's a reasonable budget. There might be some technical things that might not be completely kosher with it, that, I'm not an accountant. So we could actually, you know, use, try to work together and use it as a base, so. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Chase, do you have anything?
Well, through you, does that mean you're going to vote against this?
What's that?
Well, through the Chair, does that mean you're voting, going to vote against this?
No, I probably would vote for it, but I don't, but I'm just, I'm laying it out there. I'm putting it out to everybody that this is, you know, this is the reality. If we don't have seven votes, then it's probably going to...
I think it's six votes you need to pass.
To pass, yes, I'm talking about a veto, no veto.
We don't want to pass anything without seven anymore. Good idea. Mr. Chase? I don't think that's funny, Beth. Why don't you... No, I said that's a good idea. That's why I smiled. So that's a good idea. Man, a little sensitive. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is a valiant effort, but I have, which I'm sure is no surprise, some concerns. Let me just ask a question, I guess, to Mr. Khan. I assume, Mr. Khan, you're the one that put this together? Mr. Khan?
Oh, me, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The, you've got on here, state education cost sharing per legislature, 500,000, which gets us to the 2.35 for the Board of Ed. Where's that figure come from, since the state hasn't passed a budget yet?
Mr. Khan?
Yes, I have an answer, just bear with me for a moment. If you recall from the Green Book, at the beginning, there's a list of revenues, revenues by category. One of the categories is the State of Connecticut. The current year that we're in now, the State of Connecticut gave us approximately, as a town, $31.2 million. In the Green Book, the Mayor projected an increase of about $2.1 million to a revenue income from the state of 33.3. We've heard from our legislators that as they finalize the budget at the state, that there will be more than that 33.3 coming to the town of Stratford. There is no guarantees with any money from the feds, let alone the state, so all of these numbers are risky to base our budget on, but that's a risk that we've assumed for the last, since we started negotiating the budget. So the 500,000 that you referenced, Mr. Chase, is an increment to the 33.3 that the Mayor chose to include. We chose to include a extra 500,000, we chose to be, let's say, less conservative than the Mayor was in his original budget.
Okay, I wouldn't define it as taking a risk, I would find it, call it more of a gimmick. I do not think that you should, in effect, count your chickens before they hatch, so to speak. The state's sitting there with a $5 billion budget deficit, excuse me, and the legislature is having a hard time, just as we are, trying to balance their budget. That's just one area that I have concern with. I like the comments, frankly, that were just made by Councilman Young, the Majority Leader. And I would strongly urge him, since we haven't had these, and a number of our constituents, including mine, have asked, why don't you have budget workshops? So in the spirit of, if you truly want to compromise and try to come up with a solution, maybe we should go back and have those budget workshops, which we're never, which we never had, and I'm willing to come in every night if necessary, or during the day, in order to accomplish that. But, Mr. Young, you're the chairman of the Ordinance Committee, it's in your ballpark, and I would urge you to do that. Other than that, I unfortunately can't vote for this this evening.
Okay, I'd like to make a few comments on this. I thank you for putting together a draft that is in the realistic range, where I think the other ones, I think were very detrimental to the town. I do have some concerns, though, that remain. And one has to do with a missed opportunity. In the second proposed budget, there were, there were monies for, to address the opioid crisis in town, and those monies aren't in here anymore. So I would love to see those monies back in there. It was essentially 25,000 or 30,000 to Riasap. They got an AmeriCorps grant to work on the opioid crisis. Stratford has the 10th highest in all of Connecticut deaths from opioid overdoses, so I would love to see that back in here. I think it's something that we do have to deal with, and that would simply be a $30,000 add-in to the Health Department. There are other, so that's just a missed opportunity, I think that's easily fixed. The EMS monies are still, you know, we're still loading in this proposed budget EMS with a number of expenses without really giving them a realistic way. And I see that the ambulance service fees have increased even more, but, you know, I just wonder how realistic that is. And my fear is that the general fund of this town isn't large. It was damaged in the past few years, in those years when we had taken out the pension obligation bond in 2013 and didn't raise taxes, or didn't have the revenues to compensate for the interest. So we can't go lower in our general fund, we can't be at a deficit, and I just worry about skating so close to the edge that we would have to go into that fund. So, you know, it's nice to put in ambulance service fees of 191,000, I just don't know how realistic that is, and then what happens if that doesn't occur? So I guess, in some ways, I'd like to err on the side of caution, caution being not going into the general fund when we run short. And running short includes things, let's see, let's go to the second page. What were the biggies? The legal fees, the town attorney legal fees. Man, I would love to be able to reduce those fees, and I guess one way of reducing them is simply saying we're reducing them, the other way is making sure that we can reduce them, because if we do have legal fees there, and I think the trend line is that we are spending a bunch of money on legal fees, that, you know, again, I would just hate to have to go into the general fund. I understand the sentiment, though. And the town attorney payroll, regular 72936, I think that was an error in the original budget, and that's just being corrected. Employee recruitment, legal expense bargaining, that's 90,000 there, and again, I wonder how wise that is. The real concerns I have are on the next page, where we don't fully fund workman's comp to the level that actuaries have said that we should, and I just hate to fall short on that. My big concern is the capital equipment, the $317,000 being taken out of there. And we had heard from Public Works before, Ms. Sarah, saying that a number of those things that were identified as being purchased through bond, you can't bond. So, you know, we need to do a little more investigation of that. The employee benefits, health insurance, we were already told that the figure for, actually, I need to double-check this, is this the figure, the 136, is that the savings that they had, or are we, or is this still...
When I have an opportunity to speak, I'll address it.
Okay. The health insurance EMS, again, we're throwing all of those expenses onto EMS without giving them the means to pay for it. I really value EMS, I know that they have saved me and family members a number of times, and have gotten us to hospitals very quickly, so I would not want to jeopardize that. Now, finally, it's curious, you know, there are different ways, we could simply say that if the town were to get 500,000 more, that that would go to the town, and not necessarily, I think the way that this is structured is that 500,000 goes to Board of Ed, so then, if they don't get the 500,000, they don't get, that comes out of Board of Ed? I just can't take that sort of risk with students' education. And that's not how it's going to work? Okay, that's, that's good to know. But then, if that 500,000 doesn't come through, then, again, we would be going into our coffers, because we would be sending, setting a budget without that 500,000. So rather than having 3.5 million in our reserves, we'd only have 3 million, and that's really way too low. A healthy town has, a very healthy town would have 10% in its reserves. We're down to, we're down to much less than that. So those are my concerns. The biggest concern I think I have is that the CAO and the Finance Director haven't vetted this, and I haven't heard from them, and really, this is the first time I've looked at this seriously. And I would just love to hear Mr. Wahlberg's thoughts on this, and make sure that everything is all hunky-dory before we go ahead and pass something. So I guess, I would love to have it tabled, we can continue the meeting, but I need to have their feedback. There's no particular, I mean, we've already blown through the May 12 deadline, we blew through the July 3, or July 1 deadline, and there's no particular rush today for this, and it would be good to give the administration an opportunity to hear from them, and also to hear from the Board of Ed on this. Ms. Antezza?
Before I make my comments, I would like to observe that the Chair is supposed to yield to the Pro Tem if the Chair wants to offer opinions, however. I think that the half million dollars for the Board of Ed, that Mr. Chase is worried...
However, I think that the half million dollars for the Board of Ed, that Mr. Chase is worried about, if I look at the budget, there is listed CEP and CIP, both for WPCA and the bond business that you talked about, and I think if we take those out of this budget, which can be done, I'm sure, it amounts to about over a half a million dollars, we'll take care of that.
I'm sorry, the CEP and CIP, those are reductions, those aren't additions?
They, it's not an expense to the town.
But you're taking?
The WPCA CEP is out of the WPCA operating budget, not the town, okay? That's on the first page. And I intend to, there's an explanation for that, and when we review the CEP, CIP, I was going to offer an amendment to that particular figure to change it, because Mr. McCarthy and I, that's over the VAC truck, the VAC truck was going to be charged our operating expenses, and Jay Wahlberg suggested that was not a good idea to charge certain things to operating expenses, which is our day-to-day, and he said we could use the sewer fund, which I believe has $7 million in it, according to him, and our revolving sewer fund has less, I won't go into the reasons for that, but when the CIP and CEP comes up, because they were initially going to be taken out of our yearly operating expenses, I'm going to make those changes, okay? Now, the one that you referred to on, with the bonds, there, again, I think that's probably going to come out of the budget, or can come out of the budget, because perhaps you cannot change bond payments, I don't know. But that would give, if you took those two things out, you'd end up with about a half a million dollars, which would make up the Board of Ed if the state doesn't give us the You look puzzled.
I'm very puzzled, I'm sorry. The, we aren't voting on WPCA tonight, right? We're just voting on the town.
Right, it's only these amendments, I'm sorry.
Right, I'm sorry, Mr. Khan? If you could clarify, the 389-3865?
Yeah.
100?
Correct.
That's part of the WPCA budget?
Yeah, it's independent from the amendment, Mitzi.
So, why, but that's in here, that gets us to the?
Wait, wait, so which item are you referring to? I was listening to Mitzi, but?
I'm sorry, yeah, the 389-386500, WPCA, capital equipment CEP, you're taking 200,000 out of that?
Yes.
But that's a, why is that in the town's operating budget?
Um, let me think, Beth, um, which number are you looking at? First page.
Maybe I'm wrong, I also had that, but that was something that we voted on in WPCA.
No, it's an expense item in the town budget, that's not the WPCA side of things, we are truly speaking about the town budget.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
If it's okay, Mr. Khan, do you have some information you want to put forth before I call the question, because I'm ready to call the question?
Yes, I do, Wally. When the Chair chooses to recognize?
Yes, Mr. Khan? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right, I have a number of comments. First, I want to thank everybody for being patient with the way we started the meeting tonight, and that we did eventually get on track, and your patience is appreciated. First comment, briefly address state revenue. You know, 31 million from the state, before, we used to get around 28 in 2015, 2014, 2013. We got an extra $2 million last year, current year, supposedly. We've not seen the actual revenues for the current year, well, I shouldn't say current year, because it expired on June 30th. We don't know how much the state actually gave us last year, we projected a $2 million increase last year. This year, the mayor's projecting an additional $2.2 million increase. So, I guess the word gimmick, there's just a whole lot of gimmicks going on in a budget that was constructed by the mayor's office, and if our state legislatures say that there's as much of a certainty that we will get 33.8 million as there is that we'll get 33.2 million, if the probability of one number is the same as the other, then the mayor chose to put in a lower number, and we are suggesting that, given the same probability of getting that money from the state, we're going to put in the higher number. It's not a gimmick, it's a mathematical exercise, and it's a budgetary exercise, and essentially, all the money from the state is on the line, is uncertain, but the probability of 33.2 versus 33.7 is equivalent. Second item is EMS. This proposal balances EMS. The mayor's budget drove EMS into a deficit of about a quarter million dollars. Over the last seven years, the mayor has withdrawn, for general fund purposes, about 2.5 million dollars from EMS. EMS is practically insolvent at this point, its enterprise fund is almost zero. The mayor's would have taken another 250 out of it. It's, I don't know, disingenuous. In general, it's disingenuous to say, "I care about EMS, but I'm going to draw it all the way down until it's Mr. Khan's amendment, and then I don't want you to do it anymore." Well, this proposal does not take money from EMS, it balances. It reverses the mayor's attempt to take another $250,000 out of EMS. In addition, we've worked with the EMS folks to talk to them about ways of restructuring revenues, so this also presumes a marginal increase in EMS revenue by restructuring the way that they work with the insurance companies and the way that they collect fees for services they provide, such as CPR training. You know, maybe residents will pay 30 bucks instead of getting it for free. So, EMS is whole, we are not hurting EMS. We are transferring to EMS the liability for its employee benefits. The, I think it's the 11 people that work in EMS, their salaries are paid for by the EMS, their pension, their workman's comp, for example, they're all paid by EMS, it should be under EMS's budget, and that's where we've moved it, that's the correct way of doing cost accounting, it's generally accepted accounting principles, it's Business 101. In addition to making things right and standardizing the processes, we are reversing the mayor's practice of depleting the EMS fund. Second point, this budget takes no money from the Health Department. I can only presume, when Ms. DePonte was referring to the opioid practice, if it was in the mayor's original budget?
It wasn't.
Then, I would welcome an opportunity to add that, as an additional amendment to what we have in front of us.
In the second budget.
Okay. The, no, a few more things, please, I'm sorry, it takes a while. I'll go to workman's comp. We keep hearing about actuarials, I've been in the insurance industry for 30 years, I work with actuaries every day, I work with attorneys every day. This morning, I was involved in a $60 million settlement that involved testimony from actuaries and attorneys, and it's just something that, it's the nature. This environment is new to me, this audience is new to me, but not the practice of building budgets and doing cost analysis. The budget for workman's comp, there's a number of workman's comp items, there's one for police, there's one for fire, there's one for settlements, they were all increased by a straight 25,000 bucks. Early in this process, the CIO complained, "Mr. Khan's budget is fake, all it does is make these cuts, he uses round numbers." Again, it's disingenuous and a bit of hypocrisy, because the CIO's own budget, built by him and his Finance Director, also contained rounded numbers. For 10 weeks, the CIO, through the mayor, has refused to substantiate the costs of workman's comp. I've asked clear questions of, "What fees do we pay for the management of workman's comp? What are the levels of workman's comp claims? What are those that have been realized, what are those that have been encumbered? Show it to me over the last couple of years, just show it to me for last year. Substantiate the money that you put in to the budget." They have refused, they have said, "Mr. Khan, we don't know what you're talking about, workman's comp's claims, I mean, it's in the budget, what do you mean? Well, I mean, like, you put something in the budget, there should be some real expenses underlying it." So, I've taken the $25,000 out, and we work together as a group, the six of us, and we've tried to work with the town, we've tried to meet with them, and again, the door has been slammed shut. So, the $25,000 reversals that you see in here are simply taking us back to the current year's budget, because there's been no substantiation that the current year's budget is validated by actual expenditures, whether they be claims or they be administrative fees. Legal fees, gentlemen, I'm sorry, there is an energy in the town that says some restructuring needs to occur. In my own naive way of trying to normalize different towns' budgets, there's certain expense areas, such as registrar voters or the legal office, that are extraordinarily more expensive in Stratford than they are in any of our neighboring communities. I have tried to inquire from a process reengineering or a cost accounting, or simply from, "Just show us the beef," right, little old lady standing at a counter, like, why our expenses trend the way they do? I think we can do better, I don't know how else to get department heads to be forward with ideas on efficiencies without challenging them through a budgetary process. A year ago, there were a number of budget meetings with department heads, the Police Department offered one full-time patrol officer, no other department offered any single cut to their budget, that was last year. This year, we did not schedule formal department head budget review meetings, but there were two during our ordinance meetings, where the CIO and all the department heads were in this room, the CIO kept repeating, "They're here, ask them questions." A few questions were asked, but for the most part, those two budget hearings during our ordinance meetings, we didn't take advantage of. I didn't take advantage of it, because I had already talked with them, one-on-one, and there wasn't any initiative for them to change anything. And none of the rest of us took an opportunity. So, in a sense, we did have, through these ordinance meetings, when they were all here and they were all invited to speak, and we were all invited to ask questions, so we've had at least two, quote, "formal" department head review meetings as a town council. Leases, one of the mayor's early complaints is, "Oh, you're trying to capitalize leases." None of the items that we're looking to capitalize are leases, that was validated three different times with, I'm going to get her name wrong, Rachel, our operations supervisor?
Ms. Sarah.
Thank you, and the CIO. They've three times asked me, "Greg, can you send us the line items that you're talking about?" And they come out of the capital budget, they come out of the other Green Book that we have, and that Green Book says, "What's the funding source for these capital items? Or these capital equipment items?" And the funding source could be a bond, it could be, "We're going to make EMS pay for it, we're going to make WPCA pay for it, or we're going to make the town pay for it." And in the town paying for it, there's a number of items that are purchases that could be capitalized, and given, anybody have a savings account? What do you earn in your savings account? Probably nothing? And your credit cards, you can borrow money today at a very low rate, so it's a great time to borrow money, and if we're going to capitalize another million dollars, like I'm suggesting here, the cost of that capitalization is relatively insignificant. So, we can get the equipment that the police need, that the fire needs, that EMS needs, that public work needs, at a 2% or 3% borrowing rate, and we're not cutting services, we're not disrupting services, everyone's going to get what they asked for. Maybe I had some more, but that's pretty much it, I just wanted to respond to the points made by other council people, and to let everyone know that this is not an arbitrary budget amendment, it's been with the CIO's office for the last three weeks in the form of a 38.99. The CIO, through the mayor, refused to respond. We took a few of us, and, you know, as Scott mentioned, he's very adamant against a tax increase, Wally's very adamant against making sure that the Board of Ed gets what they need and not what they'd simply ask for. But people here are willing to make compromises for the greater good. It isn't just a matter of spending more, and it isn't just a matter of accusing someone else of not being thoughtful or deliberate or conscientious. We've been all those things, we've been thoughtful, we've been deliberate, we've been rational, we've been deductive, we've been conscientious. There probably will be some fine-tuning to this, it's expected, but the empathy in the community is no tax increase. And if the Board of Ed, for example, they had a benefits item in their budget this year of about $300,000 increase, when they asked for their contingencies, those contracted obligations, they inflated that number to $600,000. So, there's the Board of Ed budget. What's your increase for healthcare benefits? It's $300,000. Good. That's the budget that was signed. What's the budget that they gave to the CIO two weeks ago, when they wanted to rationalize this whole new mill rate that has gone out in our taxes? Suddenly, their number went up to 600,000. There's no footnotes, there's no explanations, that's the kind of budgetary tricks or the kind of flim-flam that is very discouraging as a citizen, and sitting up here as an elected official, I'm trying to reverse those practices of stealing from your enterprise funds, of faking numbers in the budget so you can pad it or get what you want, and in that case, I don't, if the state decides not to give us a 33.7, the BOE should pay a little bit of the, they should carry some of the pain, just like the taxpayers and the other residents carry a bit of the pain. The BOE has $3 million worth of cost avoidance opportunities in front of it, they've started to look at a few of those opportunities, but there's a lot of inertia, they're very slow to, like, consider other people's ideas, and I'm not the smartest guy in the room, and it's hard to introduce change to any organization, but when someone comes to you with an opportunity that's proven in the marketplace and your reaction is, "Don't tell me what to do, who do you think you are?" You're kind of wondering, "Well, I think I'm a taxpayer, and I think I'm a representative of the people, and I think you can do a better job." So, there's a bit of arrogance there, but it's based on experience. Thank you all for sitting here tonight, thank you, Beth, for letting me?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Ms. Antezza? Ms. Antezza?
I don't want to step on Mr. DePonte's question, but what I'm wondering is, and I'm hearing this, the possibility of still maybe compromising some more, possibly, and also perfecting the budget that we've handed, and it seems to me that perhaps we could have a budget workshop next week, and in this, that? And in that spirit, I would like to just table this.
Can I?
Hey, there's a motion to table.
Can I speak first? There's something I wanted to bring up. Can you remove that?
I'm sorry.
Pardon? Can you please remove that? It is something I had wanted to say.
No, there's a motion to table. Is there a second to the motion to table?
I withdraw just for the moment.
Well, you're, that's, okay. Mr. Farrington Posner.
Thank you, Mitzi, I appreciate it. And thank you, Madam Chair. Well, first thing I want to say is, I've not heard from any department heads, nobody, knowing the budget crisis we're in right now, I have not been contacted by any of the department heads to let me know where they can find any cost savings. And just as this is very important to us and the residents, I would think it would be just as important to the department heads here in town to also be searching within our own budgets to find those cost savings. So I understand that about having budget workshops, but I've not been approached, not once, by any of them. But that's neither here nor there. I want to bring up a point that the chairwoman brought up earlier about the opioid prevention The chairwoman brought up that the opioid prevention program was being cut in our budget. I'd like to bring everybody's attention...
No, 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 I'm sorry. I just want to correct that. I said it's not included in the budget. That was in the mayor's second budget. It wasn't in this first one.
It's in the mayor's first budget.
No, no, no. I don't think it was.
On page, on page 32, I'll bring everyone's attention to page 32, Community Services. Org. 01351. Object #7032 is Contractual Services. The FY 2017 budget was $181,000. The proposed mayor's budget 2018 is $195,550. If you look at the footnotes, footnote #2...
That was for RISEP.
The increase in, which is what you mentioned when you were sitting up there, the increase in contractual services due to contribution to RISEP nonprofit for the opioid prevention program. Nowhere in the new amendment is that line item of $14,500 cut. So I would like if the chair can...
Let me clarify.
Take that back or clarify that.
No, no, I'm not taking it back. RISEP got the AmeriCorps grant. Then, between the first budget, I forgot that this was, that that part was in the first budget. In the second budget, what was in the second budget was for two opioid addiction workers, outreach workers. So if you look at the second budget, it's either 25,000 or 30,000 in there. So that's what's a missed opportunity. I would like to see the two be working in Stratford rather than just one. Okay? It's a minor increase, and I think it's something that, so I'm not taking it back. I just wanted to make sure that...
It just needs to be clarified. The way you had stated it was that it was never, that we were actually taking it all out of the budget when it's actually...
No, I don't think I said that. I said, "What wasn't included." But when, I understood that it was going from the green book and not the second budget. The second budget had it fully funded, had both people fully funded. Okay? I had forgotten that one person had been funded in the first budget. Ms. Manis?
I just wanted to add, I listened to everyone's comments, and, you know, I agree that some of that, I knew about that in the health piece. And then I agree with Mr. Khan too about the education funding. The 33 million is all up in the air. Let's face it. It may not happen at all. They could say nothing. They could put that $900,000 back on the municipalities. It's all still on the table. One of the things that we are losing track of, and, you know, you mentioned your accounting principles and forest for the trees. My work is in organizational leadership, okay? When you look at a budget and you look at how things are going to be deviated and spent, I feel like we're playing with, like, a Mr. Potato Head missing its parts, like, we keep losing the parts, and then it doesn't look like a Mr. Potato Head anymore, or a doll that's missing its arm. Like, we're trying to, a three-legged stool, I've heard said a bunch of times. You know, the idea that a vision is driven by a leader. And today, you know, Mayor Harken is not here, the vision for this budget was to pull from enterprise funds, to fund our town with the many businesses around it, to fund education and to raise taxes. That was his vision, and that has been his vision for eight years. This council came in two years ago with a very different agenda, and I think even Mr. Chase, Mr. Llewellyn, Mr. Pante and Mr. Harden are included in that. We all have a very different agenda with regards to business as usual. Now, when you try to move a train from its rails, it's really hard. And I think that what's missing in this, and if we're going to wait and do budget workshops and all that, that's great, but we don't, what do we want the town to look like? Like, you, so for example, I'm going to use this as an example, you completely, all public works, fire, EMS is left, are, all these public works, fire and communication and PD is left intact. Awesome. Public safety, all set. Public safety feeds into the opioid crisis, right? And then we look at fire and where fire sits as responder one. Every fire personnel has to go out whenever there's a crisis, even if it's medical. That's something we can't change. We can't make fire take position two and EMS take position one. That has to come from the leader. Like, these are things that are so immobile that our council can't make changes on, and it really does impact over time, it impacts callback, it impacts everything. Not that it's good or bad, but the idea that the next leader that comes in has to have a vision for how we're going to do this. And if we want to pass a budget that the seven of us have, I think we need to either come up with a vision that we all can agree on, or we need to, in some way, shape or form, kind of make sure that it matches up with the vision of what was presented, because otherwise, it's going to be a three-legged stool and it's never going to work. They're going to complain and cry, it's never going to work, because a department head sit with their leader and say what they want to have happen. They don't sit with us. They don't sit with us.
I've never heard from any of them.
So, so, we can have budget workshops and we can all disagree, or we can get together and say, "What do we want Stratford to look like, 10 of us?", and put something together. That's one way of doing it. Or we can put something forward and make a three-legged stool. I don't know what the right answer is, but I'm lacking, I think this is a compromised vision, which is awesome, and I think that that's where we're at right now and what we really need. But the bigger picture, like you're saying, the opioid stuff has gone, the this, the, okay, so what do we want it to look like in the end? Because we could say, "Where could you cut from?", all day long, but if we don't know what we want the end product to look like, we're never going to be able to get there. We're saying we want town attorneys' fees to be cut, while putting a town attorney on staff, we can't do that, we don't have the power. So, you know, to cut it further, like, these are the things that I don't, we don't have any power over. So what can we get done and what is possible within this budget? Maybe the CIO and the mayor, when they look at this, can say what is, you know, what is possible, but I just, I just, I think we need to decide what we want our vision to be. And I think we each individually know, but we need to find a consensus.
Ms. Antezzo?
Before I move to table this, I don't know, Tina, are you saying we should get together as a group and put this off for the time being to perhaps more compromise, more changes, more, and your vision?
Yeah.
I'd like to poll each person, if I might, and ask them what they would think about having a meeting. We have six, I know we have six votes tonight.
Through the chair, I'll say to you, Mitzi, I think that it's, I think that it's, I think that it, we could vote on it now. I think we could vote on it right now. We could pass six and it's going to be vetoed.
I'll call the question.
I, I, I just, I know it will be.
I'll call the question.
Ms., Ms...
Second.
So you have the floor. I'm sorry, wasn't recognized. Ms. Antezzo, you have the floor.
I was trying to just have an informal poll of each person to find out if they'd be willing to table this and come next week to, we'll definitely have a workshop.
Unfortunately, Mitzi...
What is your feeling?
Let's vote.
Have you heard from any department heads that said that they would actually cut their department? I haven't. I mean, we're now in July, and nobody has come to us and said, "I'll cut my department."
That's not what I'm saying. No, I'm not talking about having department heads come in unless we feel that we really have to, but there are some things in here that could be changed, fixed, amended, and we could come together with what I call Tina's vision of where we're going. And in that case, we would hold up on this and come together next week.
We are, we are past the fiscal year. I say we leave the vision to the next mayor.
Ms. Antezzo has the floor. Ms. Antezzo, I would like to respond to you in terms of that.
I was just going to go around in order.
You want to go around in order? That's fine.
Yes. He answered.
No, no, she's asking, she has a specific question.
I'm ready to do what my constituency wants, and that's to pass a budget tonight.
Okay, Mr. Kadim, if you can respond only to her question.
Ms. Antezzo, that's very admirable to want to sit and do this, but we've been sitting, doing this for a very long time now, and to pass the budget tonight is exactly what we need to do. And it's good to, because we're being proactive. We recognize, from the other side, we haven't heard anything. You know, I understand the mayor's probably taken a little time to put together his budget, if he's going to put another budget forth. I have no idea. Of course, quite naturally, that's his job, so we've been waiting for that. Why is this, why this information's being put out, we didn't get a response. So, you know, to prolong it, if that's what makes you feel good, the fact of the matter is, we're not sitting idle. We sit and we looked over and we compromised. Like I said, we were at 216, they were at 219. They did not come down, they went up. We went up as a compromise, we still get no response. So I believe, I believe we should put this forth tonight. This is the time to do it. Now, if they want to adjust and come back and have all of these meetings, for whatever reason, because it seemed like nobody's bending, because from the top, the word must be, "This is what we're doing." Apparently, they're not going to overtalk their boss, they're not going to go against the mayor, because he hired them. So quite naturally, whatever it is, is what it is. So we need to do something ourselves to be proactive, to get this moved tonight. Now, if they want to come back whenever they decide, and you know what is really interesting about this whole budget process from last year to this year? Last year, everything that, you know, the mayor wanted, he got. This year, there's no compromise for the fact that he didn't get everything he want. Not only that, there's no desire to help the people that pay all the bills, which is the taxpayers, you, myself, all included. So there's no compromise at all. It seemed like there's a closed-door policy about trying to make a difference and do something that can actually help the taxpayers. There is room in the budget. I've been looking at two budgets, actually more than that, because I have budgets prior to this, and there's always room. There's so many positions that you really don't need, is redundant, then there's taxes, there are raises that are coming out of left field, money is just running all over the place, there's no control, and for whatever reason, for whatever reason, why the departments did not cut some things from their department is irrelevant. We have a job to do. We have to do this tonight, so that, now, if they would like to respond, that would be great, but we really need to get this done tonight. That's just my overview, and thank you very much for the floor.
Madam Chair, I thought, I thought our poll, Madam Chair, you were polling people.
Please go in order.
But I didn't really, I didn't realize we were allowed to give a whole explanation. I thought this was a yes or no answer, so I'd like to give an explanation to my vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My next question would have been, Mr. Khan, is your feeling that we should pass the budget tonight, or we should postpone to have a workshop or get together of all the people? Not necessarily the kind of workshop we had last year.
Mitzi, we should vote tonight, and anyone that votes against it should have the courtesy of discreetly explaining their specific reasons for it, and then we can proceed. But structurally, everything in this proposal, in this amendment, I should say, has been validated. None of it has been refuted. It's entirely legal. It supports all contracts with all town employees and all supply vendors. It's the, we should vote on it tonight.
Thank, thank you.
Ms. Antezzo, thank you for asking me the question also. I think, I would love to hear from the administration on this. I haven't, this was the first time tonight that I had actually gone through this, because I've been sent many spreadsheets. The one that this, the work, I was sent a spreadsheet with two sheets on it. I think I was told not to pay a lot of attention to the one that this one was, and to pay more attention to the 38.99.
You've had the 38.99 for about, I believe, about a month, if not...
Yeah, but the last...
But did you pay any attention to that prior to tonight?
The 38.99? Yeah.
So all this does is give more to the BOE?
I still want to go through this a little more thoroughly. I mean, it looks like there are other changes and assumptions in here.
So, so, your...
And in terms of compromise...
Your answer is...
I'm sorry, in terms of compromise, I don't consider it a compromise when somebody says, "This is your compromise." You know, it's not really a compromise, it wasn't so much a give and take. I don't remember, anyway. I, I need more time on this. We have two members who aren't here.
Beth, Beth, to be honest...
And I'd like to hear from the administration.
The night, the day we met at the Board of Education in the morning, we not only didn't see the so-called compromise, but Tim Neack was so busy printing it up that Vinnie didn't even have them in hand.
That...
Okay?
That never got presented.
And we were supposed to vote on something we didn't even have in our hand.
That never got presented.
Yes, okay.
So I need more, I would actually like to table this and vote on it at the next meeting.
Phil, what is your feeling about...
I would, from, just from going from as I spoke before, I would just soon table it, but if it's brought to a vote, I will vote for it and I will vote in favor of it. But the whole thing is that it's going to have six, we're going to pass it, the mayor's going to veto it. So, no, but I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's...
We shouldn't excuse the mayor's actions, though. Let the mayor veto it again. Let him do it again. We're in a budget crisis, let him veto it.
All right, let's go...
Ms. Antezzo?
So it's just playing games.
Let's go to the next, let's go to the next...
Mr....
Excuse me, I was going to ask, Mr. Chase, I sort of know ahead of time.
I don't have to explain how I'm going to vote, because I've already done that. Secondly, I just need to correct Mitzi. At that Board of Education meeting, we had come up with a compromise that at the time, the majority leader was on board. He talked to Mr. Khan. Mr. Khan came running in and talking to Tina and to Mr. Posner, "You can't vote for this, can't vote for this." And it was a reasonable compromise. The chairman was bringing down her, her proposal of 2.75 to the Board of Ed, down to 2.35.
No, no, no. It was 2.5, 2.55 or 2.5, but it never got introduced.
No, we couldn't introduce it, and it was...
But it wasn't 2.35. I can't vote for 2.35.
Well, you would have had my vote at 2.35. The point is that before we could even bring it out, it was being printed, and we extended that courtesy to other council people, Mr. Kadim decides to call the question and shuts off debate.
Yeah.
And then it happened at the next meeting. So, I'm not voting for this, but I'm more than willing to sit down with the majority leader, work something out that we could get six votes or seven votes for veto-proof budget. May I make a correction? There's nothing to correct. Everything I said was fact. Well, you, there, there have been many definitions to the word compromise. However, your compromise, I saw the sheet, never went below $219 million. That's not a compromise, in my estimation.
And point of clarification...
I'm sorry, there's no clarification. Go ahead, Ms. Man...
There's no point of clarification now, town attorney?
Is there anything procedurally you need clarification on?
Well, I'd like to clarify something, my name was just used to Mr. Chase. Mr. Chase, I don't, I don't know what you're talking about. I was never talked to by Mr. Young or Mr. Khan.
Ms. Antezzo has the floor.
Like, it doesn't, this is the first I'm hearing of this.
Ms. Antezzo has the floor.
I think I'll call the question.
Okay, all in...
Second.
Is there a second to call the question?
I'll leave Kadim second.
It was my turn to talk!
The question is being called. Mr. Farrington Posner? Wait one second.
I'm sorry, I...
I'm sorry, I apologize, but Tina, I started with you.
There was a motion and a second.
Second by Wally Kadim.
Hold on, hold on, the tape's getting changed. Don't, don't say anything.
Changing the tape.
Say it again.
That wasn't picked up what you said on the tape, your second. I'm asking everyone not to speak while she changes the tape so you can have a record. You moved while she was not recording.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that motion to call the question was made by Ms. Antezzo and seconded by Mr. Kadim. Mr. Farrington Posner?
Yes.
Mr. Kadim?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yeah, no.
Nothing but the facts, nothing but the facts.
We're voting to move.
God was moving in you right there, brother. You stopped. God was moving in you right there.
That was a no. Mr. Chase votes no.
We're voting to move the question.
This is voting to move the question.
To move the question, yes.
Okay.
Okay. I will vote to move the question, yes.
Okay, and I'm voting no on moving the question. So that passes seven to one. Now, on the question, which is the budget as amended at the level of two-hundred-and-nineteen million dollars. Mr. Farrington Posner?
Excuse me, would you read that again?
Repeat that?
We are voting on the budget as amended, I'm sorry, at two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand. One-oh-three-four-four-eight.
Two-hundred-and-seventeen million.
I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-seventeen million, one-hundred-and-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars.
No, 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 wait, wait, Madam Chairman, I believe the number was two-hundred-and-seventeen million, one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-four-hundred.
No, one-oh-three.
One-oh-three.
One-oh-three?
Four-four-eight.
It's said both ways. It's one-oh-three?
Is it one-oh-three or one-thirty?
It was one-oh-three.
You said one, the motion was one-thirty.
Okay.
Correction of, correction of that is one-oh-three.
Uh, that's a different number. I had recorded two, and I had said two-hundred-and-seventeen million, one-hundred-and-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-eight.
No, you have one-thirty, don't you?
That's what the clerk has?
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Whatever, what does the clerk have?
The same thing she has.
We have the same number up here.
Two-seventeen, one-oh-three, four-four-eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, we are, are we, I want to ask you what we're voting on now. We're voting on.
We're voting on an ordinance adopted.
The ordinance as amended.
Yes, an ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the town of Stratford for the fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and seventeen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, and appropriating the sum of two-hundred-and-nineteen million, four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, be, wait, be patient, and twenty-three dollars in accordance therewith, which was amended to be two-hundred-and-seventeen million, one-hundred-and-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars.
Point of clarification, this is a clarification. Are we voting on an amendment now or did we already amend the budget?
You are voting.
You're voting on the amendment. Should the amendment pass, you still have to vote on the motion as an amendment.
Okay, all, Mr. Farrington Posner on the amendment?
Yes.
Mr. Kadim?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Ms. Manis?
Education's at two-point-three-five and this is a legal budget. District ten will vote yes.
And the first district, I vote no on the amendment. Okay, now we are, that passes six to two. Now we are voted on the budget as amended. Okay, Mr. Farrington Posner?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead, Mr. Kadim?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes. And the chair votes no, that passes six to two again. And, okay, now.
Madam Chairman, point of personal privilege, before we break up, I just wanted, for the record, to note that I did hear from Mr. Llewellyn, who had a family obligation he had to meet this evening and could not be here.
Yes, and I want to point out, Mr. Harden was also, he was out of town, he had prior plans. There's a second thing on the agenda, which is.
Chair, Milray?
Yeah, that's what I was just getting to.
Sorry.
There was a second thing on the agenda, which is an ordinance levying a tax rate of thirty-nine-point-seven mils on the dollar on the grand list of taxable property in the town of Stratford on the first day of October, two thousand and sixteen. What?
That's correct. That is correct. It's always the previous year.
How do we introduce an amendment to that to revise it to thirty-nine-point-two?
Okay, first, somebody has to move the question.
To move the item, second.
Would somebody like to make a motion for this?
Make a motion to move the question.
Okay.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
You're, you're making the motion. I'm sorry, you aren't moving your question.
Point of information, point of information. Could you please explain to me what you're talking about?
Then you have to do the Milray.
Don't we amend it first?
You can't make an amendment until you move an item on an agenda.
Right, I know, that's what, so Mr. Farrington Posner made the motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Young. Okay, discussion? Is there an amendment to be offered?
Offer an amendment to revise the Mil rate from thirty-nine-point-seven to thirty-nine-point-two.
Reflecting the adopted.
Reflecting the adopted budget amendment.
Right.
Okay, so you're making an amendment to, to have the Mil rate be thirty-nine-point-seven, rather than thirty-nine-point-seven be thirty-nine-point-two, which represents a point-two-one increase in the Mil rate.
Correct.
Okay, and then there's a seconded by Mr. Young. Was that seconded by Mr. Young? Okay, discussion on the amendment? Okay, being none. Yeah, I'd like to just wait for Mr. Chase to return.
Has this been seconded?
Yes.
Now we're at discussion?
We're in discussion, but there was none. Yes, Ms. Manis?
So thirty-nine-point-two is point-three higher than what we had anticipated. However, it's way less than, it's way less than what we hoped for. And one of the things I want to point out is that this budget and this Mil rate will avoid litigation from the WPCA regarding these illegal transfers. This budget and this amendment could possibly avoid litigation regarding the levying of taxes without a Mil rate being passed by this governing body. That was a question brought up by multiple lawyers in public spaces and here officially at the podium with regards to the tax bills that were sent out to people. Now, whether or not that litigation goes forward, it was in the paper from Ms. Antezzo, there are people that are planning to move forward with that. That's one lawsuit. The next lawsuit is WPCA that's brimming from, and possibly DEP. So if we can get this done, and although there's only six votes on it, I, I would really recommend that people take a look on this and if it gets vetoed, that we, we try to maintain this because I don't want to spend more money in, on lawyers. And I don't, not that I don't love you guys and want you to eat, but I think that we just keep spinning our wheels. I, this, this fixes it. So I'm voting for this and I'm voting for, and as I voted for the other one, and I'm just hoping that this is enough of a compromise to stop the legal action because there's a lot of legal action that's pending right now and we don't need it. We don't need that.
Call the question.
Okay, all in favor of calling the question, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, the motion to call the question passes eight to zero. Okay, now on the Mil rate, to increase the Mil rate from thirty-eight-point-nine-nine to thirty-nine-point-two. Mr. Farrington Posner?
Yes.
Mr. Kadim?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Antezzo?
I just have a question about what you just read.
I'm sorry, we're in a.
I, before I vote, what is stated is thirty-nine-point-seven-oh and you said thirty-eight point?
It's an increase in the Mil rate, but it, it's a decrease from the thirty-nine-point-seven.
All right, well, I vote for thirty-nine-point-two-oh. Yes.
No.
Yes. And the chair votes no. Okay, so that motion passes six to two. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
No, 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 you can't adjourn. You just voted on an amendment.
I'm sorry, we, I'm sorry, we voted on the amendment. Take away the motion. Okay, now we're voting on the Mil rate. Mr. Farrington Posner?
Yes.
Mr. Kadim?
Yes.
The Mil rate as amended.
As amended, thirty-nine-point-two, correct?
With gratitude for Mr. Leclerc, yes.
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 Yes, and the chair votes no, that motion passes six to two.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Madam Chairman?
Okay, is there a motion to, I'm sorry, Mr. Florrick?
Yes, before, before you adjourn, I just want to remind the council members that they have to sign the rate bill before they leave here tonight.
Thank you.
What are we signing?
Oh, yeah, okay.
The Mil rate. Okay, okay. Thank you, Wally.
Thank you.